And then we'll just send that to him.
Okay, we'd like to ring the city council meeting order. And, uh, yeah, this would you?
Most wonderful.
Here. See?
Huh?
Here.
Yes.
Thank you. We'd like to begin with Pledge of Allegiance by Corey Daniels, after which Dennis Thorp will give us something.
What is it for the citizens?
To the flag, the United States of America. To the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, and in this home, the Constitution.
I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here. In this city council meeting, we ask that thy Spirit will attend us. That we might inspire on behalf of the residents of our great city. We ask thee to bless our county, state, and federal leaders. With thy Spirit as well, as they strive to make the best decisions as governors. Please bless those who will be on the agenda. And they will have thy Spirit to guide and direct them as well. Very thankful for the gift of thy Son, saying these things with his name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Uh, yes, I have. Okay, thank you. Uh, for the public comment is Bob Bissler. I, I think, I think I've got that right. Don't worry. Okay. And if you'll just come forward. Uh, there's a five minute limit.
My comments about the rezoning property sound different. Here's the, Mr. Thompson has put in a position where he has no choice but to do what he's doing. And I totally understand his position. The property to the west of his should have never been zoned or partial, had it left him in an island. Or at least a peninsula. And it should have never been made commercial all the way around. He got kind of put in a position where he's forced to switch property to that, that company. Pretty sure whatever, whatever that is. Uh, and I told you, Dan, but my question is, what are we having a conditionally because of this where? The people directly affected saying yay yay. Uh, instead of the city council, they're saying, here we go. And I understand where Mr. Thompson is, and I understand how he's put in a position where he has to switch property so he can stay far away from the city as he can, but he's still in the city property. And I don't think all the facts that I explained to him, to other than, hey, help the city fix our problem by taking his property out of it and making it all marginal or, you know. I know you, you're gonna kind of do what you're gonna do, but the problem drove it because you made that all the way around and left him with no choice. And I'm asking, considered or at least a conditionally deeper that didn't to, to stay with that, at least the house there of staying residential area. He went from, uh, farmland, the residential farmland without partial. And he's still laying, laying out there. So why couldn't he have stayed residential farm? And he could have done the same thing here too. Because based on my understanding, he wants to do the same thing for the kids that have five acres. So my, I guess my question, for his hand, should have never been the case. They should have never trapped and decided partial zone to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, uh, public comment is from Paul M. Thompson.
You want, uh, addressing a, I don't want me a gym or a line. Uh, just to begin with, if you're wanting walking tea came from there, that was my father's cattle. I'm here to speak in favor, so we request. I think it would be beneficial to three purposes. First of all, the city, or that's the game. Federal government, it's my understanding they, or they prefer residential housing not be in the airbook flyover zone. If this zoning change and trade between community working and myself were made, that would eliminate that problem of substantial in flyover zone. Second, I think based on the converting. Look, today, personally, it's partial. Any or will clarify so they get better in what they feel like they need to do in that case. Third, if the E was anything, it could be this trade change. You know? Once we spoke to the people, but that spoke, spoke. South side easily, which is the country. I'm ten acres. City taxes, we have ever since it was annexed by the city. Now that I'm in a cemetery, I have three sets of great, great grandparents. From the time taxes were left in city of Ephrim, those descendants have paid property taxes to the city of Ephrim, including me. I'm, I want a home, still have a home in Ephrim. All my taxes to Ephrim City. Some consideration for the decision to put the gentleman spoke before me, as far as I know, has paid zero taxes in property taxes to the, to the city of Ephrim. Now, I feel that this own change would be beneficial to that gentleman. When that property is developed, I suspect that there will be a fire hydrant near his property. And heaven forbid, there should ever be a fire. But in the case that there would be, I suspect that the Ephrim Fire Department would respond to that fire on his property. As it should be, but with five, five closer to his property, it would benefit him.
Thank you for your consideration and for your positive vote. Thank you, thank you. Our next public comment is by motion.
Uh, did I say it right?
You said it right.
Oh, motion.
I even said it better than I say. I say Moche, it's Moche, it's Hebrew. I added, I was coming to. I didn't, I didn't come to talk to you, but you're one of the people, so I did. And if I may, I'm gonna just talk to my neighbors.
Yeah, if you'll just try.
Send the people online if there's any.
I wanted to see fellow human beings. Agenda's a play in my name, let's play a quick story back to it. We'll get future conversations from here. I don't know where to put myself, that's okay. Um, my name's Moche Arona. Been in San Pete County for about five years now. Y'all locals don't make it that easy to come in here. Plead you for it, but personally, you're caught. You've made it really hard, not you, but the locals, pitchforks and knives and kind of hard to get into the farming world, hobby farming, what a cool term. I'm a forty-two-year-old man with two kids that's hobby farming. Because it's my response to the current state of the world right now. Everything that we all binge this morning on our phones, the media, the news we're listening to, we're all trying to respond. I hope that the law is in our side. I don't know if the law is in our side. I don't have enough to be about it. I'm not here to talk about law. I'm here to talk about being a neighbor. I live here in Ephrim, just in the outskirts of town. I don't get any of the services. I get some of the services that I don't want. And that's what I want to talk about. I have fifty-one acres that is dedicated to me, to steward, as long as I want to. Storing wetlands and meadows. The cows don't deserve to be in, on part of it they do if they're heavily managed. The wetlands were runny, putrid. You couldn't have sent anybody else in there. They're crystal clean now. I drink out of my spring, Johnson's Spring, wonderful place. And I brought in new practices. They've been hard to bring in, okay? I'm partnering with nature and partnering with biology, organics, all these trendy words that we have. They, a bunch of hippies have run in our home, but they're real. We have stories from our grandparents, we used to do it this way. That we didn't bring the chemical warfare into our homes against one another. I was on my property with my children and had a plane fly over my head and drop pesticide directly in my face. And I tell you, none of you want to have that experience, not like that. I met a pilot, face to face, man to man, and I said, if I had a gun, I would have killed you. You assaulted me from the air, you assaulted my children, my chickens, my ducks, my sheep, the llamas, the horse, my wetlands. Four years of work of restoration, I'll be fine. The land will be fine. That happened to me, that happened to me. I'm scared. The more I read about it, not, not how much money I can get, but how compromised my health could be. It's only dangerous if you touch it. Well, it's not that dangerous. Just don't get in the water, don't touch it. What? Oh, okay. Farmers hired them, the pilot, the company, to spray chemicals on their crops because they don't know how to, they're grasshoppers. And I'm sorry to make that a small thing because I know the grasshoppers are a big thing. But these are conversations that get to be had. I'm almost done, thank you. Between ourselves. Again, I don't know a lot about the law, but I know we people, that brings in my head. And you see a bunch of people that inspire me every day, all the honesty up here in the country, doing some really neat things with a lot of land and lots of worship. I bring a lot to the table too, and there's a lot of trust in the natural system. We do not need to abandon. We don't need to abandon one another's differences or not. I feel better than anyone here, and vice versa, we have ice. We speak the same language. We have to manage our waste somehow. And waste management systems, it will come back in further days. I don't know anybody, this land will probably eat me. Um, I want to stick around, I want to get to know some people, but I also want to stay in my lane. And it's really good sticking on my side of the fence. I want to ask the question and leave it at that. Why is it so hard for so many people in the city to stay on their side? Why is it so hard for young, so many to stay in your mind? That was a real story I have for me. I hope I'll be okay. I will, I'm gonna go back to farming. And, uh, luckily I have a voice, a little bit more one-on-ones, more important, but I'm grateful to be here today. Thanks.
Thank you.
Beautiful, beautiful prayer too. Brought me tears, it brought me back to younger age. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, we'd now like to move toward item number one, our public hearing group, we heard it for fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget commitment. Right now, and here. In budget management, definitely. End of the year, so this is the list that we have to go through. General fund, it's supposed to grant funding that has come in throughout the year. Insurance costs and what higher I felt you did. So we, we just that. That's getting any of the, at some events. Art, the three thousand guitar award, that's by the city as well. Um, or parks and cemetery. General fund. So, so that's grant funding that's come in. Questions on that, sort of, yes. Back fees for services. Your vision of five hundred, basically, takes it to one of those. Parks, we got brick capital project fund, this is entry that is to correct the funding that we had last year on our financial. Longer. For interest payments, we have outworks facility. We have this total cost from what we have in budget, but we also have to increase growth. So it's suggesting that. For grant fund, the tractor and the grid of the system, going maintenance, certainly. Those are the amendments. If there's any comment or questions on that. Any questions, council members? Is Councilmember Bill online?
He is.
Okay.
Yes.
So, Councilmember Bill, when I, when I ask if any councilmembers have questions, please respond if you have a question, okay?
Thanks, John, I will do that.
John, I will do that.
Thank you. Any, any public comment at all? The proposed budget amendments. Hey, seeing no, uh, public comments, we'll move to item one, should be B. Or no, it's under presentation, so A, YTC Presidential Service Award. Who, who is going to be, okay.
Um, I would like Katie and Lillian come up because they're actually the ones that are getting this. So we had four kids qualified for the Presidential Service Award this year. And, um, there's different categories that they can earn it in, depending on their age. If they are, um, fourteen to, I mean, twelve to fifteen years old, they can earn it in the youth category. And so Chrissy Gill earned that in the youth category, and she earned a gold medal. And she served a hundred and fifty and a half hours. That earned her the gold medal, and she's not here, they're out of town.
Anthony, you better congratulate your daughter, okay?
I'll make sure she gets it.
That is sixteen to eighteen, and for those hours, they have to work so much more. It's like triple how many more hours they hold these kids accountable for this. And so she served a hundred and eighteen and a half hours, and so she earned the bronze medal. Um, just to kind of put that in a little bit of perspective, if, even if she had a job and been working just for ten dollars an hour, that would have been eleven hundred bucks. So she chose to give up that time and serve other people in our community freely with no, um, compensation. And that's, when you think of it that way, that's a pretty big.
It's amazing.
I mean, that's awesome that she could have done other things of her kind that chose to do. So I think that's pretty awesome. And then the other two, um, are Katie Alder and Kaia Olsen. And here's Katie's, and they both got the gold, um, award in. Now, you should wear this every day. Actually, wear it to the airport especially. Um, and so Katie served two hundred and fifty-nine hours. And Kaia served two hundred and seventy-six hours. So once again, if you put that in a monetary thing, if they worked a job that only paid them ten dollars an hour, that is almost, Katie would have earned twenty-five hundred dollars. That's a significant amount of change she could have had in her pocket, but instead she looks around in our community and chose to serve in various ways. And so I think that's awesome. And Kaia, same thing. Oh, um, do I have anything I'd like to say, or you just want to run for your seats? Thank you. And so this is a national award that you apply to, um, a national organization, and it is a presidential award. And so that's something that I think is very noteworthy, that these girls do have them. And they both earned it more than just this year. Have you heard it three years? All three years, Lillian, you're. Two or three years. So they both earned it three years. It was, this wasn't just a one-and-done, this'll look really good on a resume. This is something that they have. I mean, this is a standard that they have out there, like, this is a quality that they, is part of them, and I think that's awesome.
Thank you, congratulations, Senator.
You know, it's really, it really says a lot about you too, and your focus and, uh, what you put your time into. The fact that it is service-oriented, this, this award, these two presidential awards and the other awards. Uh, but it, it just talks loudly about who you are and about who your families are. And so not only, I think not only should you have a round of applause additionally, but also your families. Thank you very much. Moving on to item two, consent of items. Two A of the A ratification of the warrant register between May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five and June thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. And B, approval of June fourth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting minutes. Looking for motion.
I would like to more clear approval consent, I think was missing.
Motion made by. Was that a second?
It was, yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Moving to the study agenda, item three, uh, A, historic committee formation bylaws. Michael is our, uh, library director.
About bylaws, but historic. And city history reservation motion board. Be the official title.
I'm gonna interrupt you. Can you lower that closer to your mouth? Scoot over. Very good. All right. Thank you.
This board is just to help the city manage the historic properties owned by the city. It is not a board to tell residents how to manage their historic properties. It is, we can, the board can provide some resources for any who owns a historic property to know what to do, but it is not to control this solely for the control of city-owned historic property. I mean, the bylaws would establish a board, uh, um, seven members and two ex official members. Um, and at least four of those board members would have to reside in Ephrim City. Um, knowing that a lot of the historic properties the city owns are bound to more than just residents of Ephrim. We would allow three of those positions open to those outside of Ephrim. The duties of the board would be, um, to identify the building structure sites and districts of historical, cultural, or architectural significance city owns and, um, to determine what, or make recommendations to the council as to what to do regarding those properties. And then also to help promote public awareness of Ephrim City's history and its heritage. Are there any questions?
Any questions, council members, including you, Anthony?
I really appreciate what, uh, Michael's done with this. And I know he's worked closely with Katie. And we've been in a couple of conversations. And I just really, really appreciate it. So I think that's a pulling me in the direction thanks to Michael.
No questions, Justin, uh, I'll just say amen to what Marge said. I'm a lot excited about this.
Yeah.
Yeah. And get this on a future agenda from a grateful. Good. Okay, thank, thank you, Michael. Moving on to item four, action agenda for a budget. Are you doing kind of Johnson? Also, like you just mentioned, this is just your budget corrections to, good for our audit. So just a, your answer, seeing expenses that we anticipate that started. Any, any further questions, council members? Anthony, do you have any questions with regard to these budget amendments?
No questions, Mayor.
Well, this is not telling me what to do here. Very much. Do base, well, no, well, to approve or misprove the budget. Looking for motion kept some.
Budget and the topic carried and contained there.
Motion made by Councilmember Anderson, second by Councilmember Stevens, all in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Moving on, B, the fraud risk assessment. This one is the. Back. Legislature. Cancel.
And John, do tell them that we're still at low risk.
Yeah, still. Still, still, so. Starts, this she's concerned always. So is the plan to break us up. Incidentally, our fiscal year ends the thirtieth of June. And so that's why this is coming out now. We have a uh a score of three hundred and forty-five out of three hundred and ninety-five. And it puts us in a low risk category. And uh, so I'm wondering with three point for on the BS, what are the, what are the plans? Sort of made a bit of this point. Okay. And then IT computer security. You're keeping for. We don't have some stuff, it's just not. Obviously, so, but, but. So item eight, does the entity have a formal internal audit function? We do do. The formal audit committee is the next one.
So the internal or external?
So it's. A is internal and his external.
That's the question.
Internal.
Is there criteria in this that indicates what those two committees would do?
Yeah, so. So did we fill these four holes in the first ninety days of this week here? Is that feasible? Sure.
The audit committee served a species.
Yes.
I wouldn't promise it before the end of the year. But we will get as many things notched off as we can. Uh, we have a, 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 a plan to have so, some of these completed uh August, beginning of September to you. And then the audit committees are going to take a little bit more time. It will, we will bring you um the format and then have you vote on that. Then we have to go out and recruit. Then you have to interview. Then we have to place them. So give us to the end of the year for those two.
Okay, so could we set a goal January?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. That is completely doable. Yep.
Thank you. C, ECR twenty-five dash fourteen certified tax rate. That's Jonathan.
Yes, you are. No, thanks.
Yes. When the county has the rate set at forty-four, one, two, does the true taxation, that would put it at point six eight. What this is, I'm setting that tax rate at point six eight. For the taxation process. Just set that rate. Still have to go through the taxation process to determine where this.
This one's from the Camino Verde group. The same as last year?
That's adjusted. Okay, on their end. She'll see it. They set that rate. It's three foot makes it. So. So we're not accepting their rate. Katie, any questions, council members? Anthony, do you have any questions about that?
Nope, it sounds.
It's pretty straightforward. It's what we did last year. Not accepting. And so council members are looking for a motion.
Pro solution ECR twenty-five dash fourteen certified tax rate.
Motion made by Councilmember Norfalt, second by Councilmember Stevens, all in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Moving on to item D, approval of the rap tax committee distribution of funds, Jordan.
How's it going? Hey, good, there, Scott. My good life of the party, good, good. Yeah, so we met um at the rap tax uh squad met last Wednesday. Um. We're the squad now, so.
Rap tax squad.
It's, and it's a tough squad. Um, so we met and we had three applications and um, all three were approved this time around. And I'll go through all of them. Uh, I, I applied on that beach, City Rec for fifty thousand dollars. And that will go towards applying for grants and serving as a grant match to get a new playground over at the family park. If we know that our one was torn out due to liability issues, so I'm trying to find ways to get that replaced. So that was fifty thousand dollars, thirty-four of that, thirty-four thousand, twenty-five dollars of that went into rec. And fifteen thousand dollars, eighty, twenty-four dollars went into the arts bucket. But that way we are following prescribed seventy percent to rec, ten percent to arts, twenty percent to parks. Um, uh, for Scandinavian days, Amanda Hanson applied to um fund a new website where everything is comprehensive on the website, where you can find all the events, all the council boards and anything you want to sign to, all of them comprehensive site. Um, that was for six thousand dollars. And that was approved. And that went to arts bucket. And for uh library, they applied for thirty-five hundred dollars for this program. That's what the great organ would say that hundreds of youth um attend. And it was well attended last year. So uh that was approved for thirty-five hundred dollars and that was in arts bucket as well. That was approved by rap tax. We were just looking for the council approval, so we need to discuss those thoughts. Yeah.
Speak into the mic.
Okay, I'm sorry. I have a question. The time park, the one on the home. That is on college.
Yes, sir.
The question I have is, would we be better off to pay our money in the canyon park or something that the city owns? Help us understand that and find you the kids who have idea.
Yeah, no, that, that is a really good question. We just had a recent thing with pick-up all of course come like that.
Yes.
Um, so I believe, I believe it's a good idea to put it on Snow College ground. It's one that spot in particular is serves, serves all of the families in that, in the north side of Efron. Um, it's within walking distance of all those houses. Uh, now the next closest playground is the one behind the library, Heritage Park Playground. And they want to get to that one, they had to cross Main Street. And you know, it's a far distance, so most likely they won't go. So with it, so it serves a lot, large, a large majority of people in that area. The second reason is Efron City does full sports there. Uh, with our, we hold all our T-ball games there and they are widely a team for, for T-ball. Uh, there's accelerated soccer games that go on over there as well and all the younger siblings going to the park. Well, they used to go to the park, the playground when it was there. So I believe it's a, even though it is no college property, as a city, it serves a, it serves a, a lot, a large amount of our population. If we put in that, in that spot, so it's kind of a strategic point that is important is what I would.
And there's not another piece of property on that land that we own.
Yes, and it's a thought to snow college as well. They are, they are more than happy to apply to us repairing or rebuilding a player as well.
Are they accepting repair and insurance?
That would be us.
That'd be us?
That'd be us, yeah.
It was us before, was it?
Yes.
It was the old one that got taken out. It was still us.
Yeah.
Did you got it in your budget?
Uh, no, not yet. But, well, I haven't, I haven't thought through all of the uh, the funding for maintenance and upkeep. But I know I'm just trying to figure out if I can get funding to get a new playground. But yeah, that, that, that's something you could say, so I'm like.
I think it's, it's wonderful that Snow College allows us because it's this, I mean, I ended up in that area. Sunday afternoon, that grassy place is packed with our, of our residents and their families. Never seen a college student on that playground. When I was there, yeah. So I think it, and I don't, I don't know if I remember right, I think then will you even be committed to college for that? Stipulates that we will, because we will pay for that uh playground to replace it and it's our residents, not the college uh population that's using that. So it's wonderful that they announced to have it. It's a blessing to our residents up there.
I agree, I agree.
Any other questions? Looking for motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the rap tax committee distribution of funds.
Motion made by Councilmember Anderson, second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, this will be a general plan amendment and a zone change for these. Um, so Mr. Brown and Mr. Thompson both spoke about this, so. Yeah. That was perfect. That's great. Um, I'm gonna try and do this without blowing up the screen. So um, Mr. Thompson owns that piece of property uh that is currently zone residential agriculture. Um, just north of Kiesel Lane. Um, just to give some context to Mr. Thompson's property, um, uh, a few years ago, he came in and requested the zone change because it was, um, I believe slated as future industrial uh annexed into Efron City. Uh, and he was using it for agriculture purposes. He wanted to uh, as he expressed, take the property and basically divide it amongst his children as their inheritance. So, holes on that. So the RA zone allows for that. If everything stays the same today, Mr. Thompson is still, can still do that. Not take back the zone change that he was granted. Um, everything around, you see that dark green to the side. Um, Camino Verde has bought that property. Uh, they bought the property from Larson Farms, I believe. Um, and so they have asked for a C-two zone uh for the properties that they have purchased. Um, and we did um get Johnson to mail to make those changes. So in the future, it also be the appropriate colors. Um, and in the C-two zone, you can do anything. Single family to high density fixed use. Um, so that kind of fits their master plan, their long-term goals. Um, our only concern, the city did not request this zone change. The city is not involved in any way or we have not talked to either applicants only to pay their applications. Um, Mr. Brown, I believe lives across the street, um, and chose not to annex. So, yeah, just right across from Mr. Thompson, right here. Um, and chose not to annex into the city at the time that the surrounding properties did, which is totally allowable. It's have to annex. Um, our only concern is that we now have a airport protection zone, which does cover Mr. Thompson's property. Um, the city would like to keep single-family residential out of the airport protection zone just because usually single-family, there's, you're expecting more of a quiet neighborhood. High density is a little bit better fit where you could have commercial buildings. Um, but Mr. Thompson could have no zone change and still do that. He would just have to have a navigation easement, knowing that they would have to sign um that. There, there will be noise. There'll be noise there. Um, and I do not know the details of what Camino Verde Group and Mr. Thompson have worked out. But they came in together and are kind of jointly applying for this because if they can't do that, they will not be swapping their land. So if it's, they want both of them to be rezoned. So Mr. Thompson is requesting that his property be rezoned to C-two. That piece of property um where the Camino Verde Group owns was just recently changed to C-two at their request um a couple of months ago uh with the planning commission and before you all. Um, but they are now requesting that that be changed to RA. So that if they did a land swap with Mr. Thompson, that he could do what he was going to do on his property down there and they would have C-two at that area. Uh, and within their master plan, nothing's set in stone with exactly what will be there. But it will be more conducive to an airport overlay zone. Um, which we would, we would prefer. But like I said, if Mr. Thompson wanted to keep his property and keep that way it is, we would allow him to move forward. We aren't going to force him to rezone his property or anything like that. Um, so the request is that Mr. Thompson's property be changed to C-two and Camino Verde Group's property be changed to RA.
What are, what are the zones around Mr. Thompson's property?
It has all been changed to C-two.
Doesn't really have any restrictions with you right now on that piece of property, what he wants to do, that's he.
He, he wants to do uh, from what they told me, there are no applications, but they would like to split the property amongst his children. Some of them want to build houses out there. Some of them may have hobby farms or, you know, things like that there. He could still do that. Uh, we do have. Hobby farms or, you know, things like that there. He could still do that. Uh, we do have. Things in place that. If there were businesses or multifamily. We would do our best to mitigate those risks. To his property by requiring fencing and things like that. Um. If Mr. Thompson stayed there, the zone stayed the same.
So if. If a trade was to be made between Mr. Thompson and Community Verde. It it still wouldn't make any difference, would it? He could still do on the Community Verde property what he wanted to do. Because it is a C. Two zone, correct?
Yes. If if it was still C two, he could still. Do what he wanted to do, except he couldn't have hands.
Yeah. And then it would be up to Community Verde to get zone change on the property that he traded for. That if that was in fact to happen.
Yes.
So. Let me understand what.
I think Mr. Thompson just wants. The surety that he will be able to do what he wants to do on his property by having the RA zone. He just wants life for life, essentially.
Not RA.
Yes.
So they can have. Can have. This way. Up there right now.
He can down here where he is currently.
But he's in the airport.
Right, but he's in the airport. Over the. Over the zone. Which doesn't prohibit. Homes from.
Right, prohibitive, but it's. You know, just from a planning standpoint, it's not the best fit. But again, we wouldn't force Mr. Thompson to change.
So they don't want to beg a small.
The two zones changed. Their individual desires for their properties.
And I believe if the zone changes were denied, I don't believe they would do a small. Am I correct in my understanding?
Yes. He's initial.
He's okay. And he is and he is in Baghdad.
Yes, uh.
The two landowners.
The two.
My favorite spot.
The city did not seek them out or anything like that. They came to us for most things changed.
What what do you want to say?
Um, planning is only uh recommended approval based on the applicant's request. Uh. It was a look. They really understood. Concern and took into consideration, but ultimately. Uh, because. They had to look out. For Ephraim City and Mr. Brown is in the county. They decided to take what. The people who want property in Ephraim City and have requested.
Any other questions, councilmembers?
So we'll just need two votes, one for the uh general amendment and one for the rezone, Anthony.
Anthony, do you have any questions?
I guess not.
Okay, looking for a motion?
I'm hoping we approve the general plan amendment. Request from Community Verde Group and Walkin T Ranch. Remend the general plan and zoning map to rezon property. Near four hundred south and eight hundred west. From agricultural A G to residential agricultural RA. And the property along Kiesel Road, west of four hundred west from RA to C two generally.
Motion made by um. By Councilmember Feld. Second?
Second?
Second by Councilmember Anderson. All in favor?
Yes.
Anthony? Opposed?
He's still on mute.
Somebody want to say what's next?
I'm unmuted, sorry. I'm here.
Uh, what's your vote?
It's the yes. Sorry.
Yes.
Sorry for the delay.
No.
Okay, so Tina. And now moving on to the item just change change request, which is. Exactly what Megan was talking about. Basically what. Got to make it official. The general from the zone change request. So looking for a motion?
I'll move that we approve the zone change request. In the same area, the same basis. And just approve the general plan amendment.
Motion made by Council. Or Feld.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Phil. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to item G ECR twenty-five dash thirteen. Power plant resolution. I think you're gonna do this, Cory.
Yeah.
Yeah, here I am again.
We like it, of course.
All of this press group. Going to say is that we have the monies to down. Uh, what the actual call the project is. Be a resupplying of the city's power plant. And. Um, through the bonding with uh US, they they could be this way of the shape is. Say we actually have the if we're gonna put down one there. And there is just some changes as far as. Now that's coming out of your pocket, if my gun right here. So I wish. Um, so obviously, um, just kind of a background, about two million we added up. With that rate structure we did. I mentioned this before. With that money was put aside because of it, because we had this in the budget for this next. This little year coming up. So that's where that money is coming from, is that rate structure. Um, which will, you know, benefit all the residents of Ephraim eventually and with our power needs. Um, so. There's a resolution, but there is the amended. If you like, there'd be some of that. Or you some. There is one change I just want to mention or mention. It says that the city shall make the capital contribution toward. The cost construction of the project from its legal available funds and shall cause the amount of the capital contribution to be delivered. The custody prior to the Olympian bonds or deposit of the project fund under the bond documents. The city acknowledges and agrees that it is responsible for the pain of the cost. Construction and displacement of components of the project and the city's responsibility under Article three. And that verifies the Ephraim City components on the city of A, which is that whole draw. I would just some word changing in the uh ended capacity period. How old the building was in that ended purchase agreement, so. It's really about it, so.
To maybe explain a little bit, maybe get everybody who's here about that two million. Power. Also, this really constitutes a peaking. And that means that when our power. Gets crazy, the cost of power gets crazy and goes over. Really what we have budgeted, then we can activate this plant to bring it back down. And and and. And settle it out, cut the highs out, cut the pieces of them out now. And uh this will ultimately save our. It's a lot, a lot. I was talking with Congressman Burgess Owens about this. Cory and I. And he. He was very favorable. Toward this project. Was excited. He basically said, finally.
Yeah.
A uh. Our. Entity is is looking toward. What could amount to be a very tumultuous future in terms of our uh power cuts.
Very could be what's happening and. You know, the power costs are uncertain. We just don't know what's coming up. It's. Decided, I'm just gonna give you a quick update on what's happening. We've actually got all of the uh. Of the ability. They're gonna start next week. It's early and stuff in and start moving forward, so. So that's a good sign. It's exciting, yeah. And come down anytime. If you guys are. Really willing to come and look and see what's going on. And you're more welcome to come and look, Council Mayor, anyone. See the progress. I hope we can try and take a lot of pictures. We can have start to finish you one looks like.
Yeah.
Don't care. Decided on the project and. This would just kind of a little bit of a. We did a curve ball. We got through that. Let's take it forward.
Okay, any questions, councilmembers?
We're just excited that. We have another power source to look to in the future and.
And and also on record too, you know, we're we're putting in this to possibly use for emergency purchases as well. Or emergency uses as well. So that's a that's a good name.
We're diagramming Cory and his crew diagram. How this could be used in uh in an emergency and. Amount to a statewide, say, even a a federal. That uh we would be able to power the city for a certain amount of hours each cycle. And so we would, it 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 just really helps us. Uh, with our redundancy for power.
Yeah, okay. Which will be C R point dash one, the power plant resolution.
Second, motion made by Councilmember Stevens, second by Councilmember Northfield. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
It has, it has started dropping, our snow is really dropping a lot. Our springs are staying pretty consistent. They're starting to drop as well as we're snowing still away. Our unit one, which is our big unit. Is generating about eight hundred or nine hundred KW, which about ten days ago, it was maxed out at eighteen. So that's how much water we've actually lost in the last ten days. And.
It's in any degree.
Can't get any rain.
Yes.
It's prey for rain. It's been this long since here in July and. It's it's all looking good as far as the next couple of weeks, but.
And did the power bump get figured out?
We did, yeah. Thanks for being. So we had a uh. A concrete. Tar blanket. Uh, wrapped around the three face line down uh two hundred south and two hundred west. They caused a. An overload on the the powerhouse substation, which just crossed the road, which blew the forty-six KV fuse. That's why there was brownouts. There was different things going on. Um, but when that blanket was across all three phases. It was seen as low. So we kept increasing. The amperage, which blew the the fuse on the six KV side. So we didn't know that it happened. And he said, well, we started to investigate in the closer. That's when we shut the power completely off. Found out forty-six fuse had actually blown in the substation. From that overload. Um. We must either had a microburst come through then or even. Because those those cars are ready. Those are big. Big as. Probably as well. And I don't know how it ended up. On top of the, you know, one forty foot power pole, but it did. So. I was somebody would have had a video or something about it. I was looking on Facebook and he says, yeah, we seen it, but we don't have video. Darn it, because that would have been something to see how that was actually. What's going on there, so.
How'd you get it off?
We we uh took it off. We disconnected the power. It was actually off and ended up going up there in bucket trucks and. And just pulling it off and, yeah.
Do we know what? It's. It's it's. Up the street.
I don't know if it was, yeah, we just don't know. It had to been a thing with any tornado or something. Those things.
It's the best of things just don't apply in a violent. So, yeah.
Very thanks.
Thanks.
We'll start with our council reports. We'll begin with Councilmember Bill and then we'll go to Councilmember Anderson.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. I don't have a lot to report. I've been playing hooky for a couple of weeks on a family trip. But uh I have coordinated with. Jordan on uh rap tech. So sorry, I'll turn on my. Beautiful face here. And um the library board, uh we've coordinated on a few things. Um, otherwise, I think we're. Good. Sorry, I've been, I'm here in Illinois in Naboo today and. Sorry, I was a little bit hard to hear at some points, but. Glad to be here and I will be there for the meeting next week.
Thank you.
There it is.
Big burden.
If I have one. Because I've been doing some things with kids here and there and everywhere. Not quite like Anthony, I might add. But his kids will never forget this trip, but I uh. I need to start seeing when the the, I'm sure there's been one. Of the. Legislature. Their summer terms, when they meet for a week here and there, and I need to to tune into that. And I'm just happy, like I said, about the bylaws. Talking about some names. That can be there. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens.
Uh, fire department's moving on well. Last two Sunday are two. Uh, work regions, they blow tested meters throughout panel. Uh, they've been working mostly on the east side of town, have very good water pressure and flow. They did find a few hybrids that need some attention, but they've been working with Jeff on those, so. Um. Starting to get ready for our insurance audit next year. And we're well on our way to just being ready for it.
I think the fire station and the fire department has. Really. Brought things up in the last few years to. They've done a good job.
Yeah, thank you. They need to go full hits to work on those. Work on those hydrants. Who's died? So. And fire engines with all the. The skate park bowl is complete. So. Expect to see you three out there. Ride your your scooters or your skateboards and.
Already in there this morning.
Clear ball.
I'm pretty sure I'm having Grantson test that out.
Threat board is exactly the grants and pickleball court uh future. In the city's future and. Scan Fest is meeting next week for kind of their follow-up. And feedback session. Zone will still be.
Take care of it tonight.
That's it for me.
Thank you. Um, as I mentioned earlier with Congressman Owens, Cory and I. Uh, did. That was a great experience, wasn't it? It was, we spent about two and a half hours with him. He looked at our. Historic Ephraim Hydro uh plant. He was amazed. Nineteen oh six. The thing uh was in operation. And uh that is just, he was. He was pretty excited about that. And then he wanted to look at the other hydro. He was fascinated. That this little community, this little rural community. Produces its own power. Not totally after about. June fifteen, it starts going downhill. But uh. But I know, but from May, beginning in May, sometime. Ending of year through about June fifteenth, we produce. Uh, a majority of our power. And and then we talked to him about the new uh peaking plant that was just uh we've just discussed and again, he was amazed. Then we took him to lunch. And uh he had to get over to the the SAMP rodeo. So, yeah, yeah. So he had a, he had a great time. I met with his uh regional rep. Last Thursday at mayor commissioner meeting. Holly Sweet, that's her name, but she just commented. Just. How positive they feel about Ephraim City. And maybe it was just because they were talking to me, but. They probably say that to every mayor. But. Was pretty good. But, but I was pretty genuine. Uh, then with the developer, Ben Sert today, he was interested in bringing some light industry uh to Ephraim County. A cult with an owner. Yeah, so we'll see, see what's going. Um, ribbon cutting for the bowl for the skate park will be on June twenty sixth at six P M. So if council members and community members want to come to that, uh, this is a big deal. This bowl, everybody's excited about it. And uh this skate park has turned into a real drug in our community. Uh, it keeps our youth active. They just, they have please.
Can you speak into the mic?
Uh, they don't, they just stay there and there's a little drain. Is Jordan here?
No, he left.
That's a good question.
What was the question? I couldn't hear him because he didn't speak into the mic. You crawl.
The one, ten, or June twenty sixth, the Canadian Tim Talk with Eric Wilkinson. And so if you want to listen to that, about eight thirty five, eight forty. Uh, I also would like to send the name Joe Howe as a member of the planning. Planning is the condition. And so that, I I need an approval on that. And a nomination and second. Okay, motion made by Councilmember Stevens, second by uh Councilmember Feld, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
He's off.
He's off.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay.
All right. Couple of things.
A little closer.
Just a couple of things.
So, uh, went on a field trip today, went over to CO buildings and I saw um some of our public works building already finished and stacked up, ready to be delivered.
And some of it has been delivered.
And some of it has been delivered. Um, then went over to the Public Works Yard, dirt is being moved. So excited for that. Then went over to Seven Fifty South and uh stuff is going on over there as well. So a lot is happening. Um, finally. So, um, I did want to mention, we have sound issues uh in the council chambers. We are uh getting that looked at. We have somebody coming in to meet with us to try and uh work on the sound because we want everybody to feel comfortable here in in this room, but also listening online. And so we're, we we heard you, everybody who's said that they can't hear us and we're working on it. Um, and uh looking forward to seeing you next Wednesday. Same back time, same back station, uh to appoint somebody uh to the council to develop the remainder of uh former council member Chad Perry's trip. So uh we will see you then, and that will be broadcast on YouTube and
We have four candidates.
So far, we have four candidates and the application uh time, you can still uh put in your application until Monday at six P M if you are interested. So if anybody out there has a burning interest to spend lots more time here with these council members, please uh put in your application. And that's about it.
Thank you. All right, having no other business, we don't have need for a closed session meeting this night. Looking for motion to end our city council meeting. Motion made by Councilmember Anderson. Second by Councilmember Stevens, all in favor?
Yes.